I'm calling the meeting in order, clerk, call roll.
Councilmember Cosrally.
Here.
DeTania?
Here.
Braziano?
Here.
Councilmember Nittori, when I'll be present this evening, councilmember Robell.
Here.
Strumlow Burke?
Present.
Mayor Melvin.
Here. Sunshine Notice?
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in the Thursday, December 23, 2021 editions of the Belleville Times and Star Ledger. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the Belleville Town Hall bulletin board and copies are filed in the municipal clerk's office.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So the next item on our agenda is executive session. The reason why we're going to executive session was the for contract negotiations. Unfortunately, we will have to clear the room. If I get a motion to go into executive session, no action will be taken while we're in executive session. We'll resume the public portion of the meeting when we exit executive session. So at this point, can I entertain a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Motion made. Second to go into executive session. Clerk, call roll.
Councilmember Cosrally.
Yes.
DeTania?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumlow Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin?
Yes. Fortunately, we do need to clear the room, everybody. Continue with the combined conference. This is the first meeting of the month. It's actually the first meeting of 2022. First meeting of the month is also a combined conference with our regular meeting. Here you have any council member that can put anything on the agenda that they like, and then we discuss it. Everything you hear is in and among the council and our professionals in front of us. You're basically here as spectators, listening to the conversation. You would have an opportunity to speak on anything you hear going in the public portion of this particular meeting. Without further ado, the first item on our combined conference is a carryover from, I think, December. It is a status of the November 1st, 2021 GovPilot Construction Code Department integration. Do you need to speak into the microphone?
So as we continue with the ongoing rollout, as of January 5th, we were in contact with the Manisticity. That was the previous vendor who, as of January 5th, did not give us the complete file of documents for the building's part, which is the problem. That was on January 5th. Good news is, on January 7th, the pilot did receive it as of January 7th, a couple of days ago, which puts them in a position now for their IT people to upload data. And there's probably two training sessions, in-person training sessions, that will be required. And those two training sessions, after those two training sessions, we should be up, running in live. I want to say February 1st, but I hate giving deadlines that I'm not definitely sure to. This has been a very long and tedious process. The reported concerns is still working out very well. It worked closing in at 900. And out of 900, there's only 111 still open.
So speaking of reported concern, I have it down as of this morning. It's down 52%. Only 24 last week as opposed to 52 the week before. The total new record is also down the same amount, about 54%. I think the reason with the reported concerns is not being utilized. To give you an example of that, as what was advised to me to ask these questions in public, by the way. Here are my reported concerns that have been assigned to the zoning department outstanding since July. July, I reported, July 28th, I reported paint peeling on the building. Looks really bad. It's been in progress now for five months. I reported a storefront offering massages. Those massages are known to be illegal because a resident called and complained about it. That was in October. I'm sorry, that was in August. Still active. Cars on property, still active. So the last time I mentioned that I was going to discuss my outstanding report of concerns, miraculously, the day of the meeting, they all went from new to in progress. That was five months ago. Five months later, every single one of them still remains in progress. So my problem is, we spent a lot of money, or we obligated a lot of money, and we're telling people to use this. And if we're not utilizing it in-house, why do we continually tell people to use the system that we're not using in-house? Here's all of my outstanding ones. I passed them out to everybody. You can see the dates. They've been sitting there for four or five months. Sorry for the small print, but the report comes out that way. So I, you know, I take exception when you say that reported concern are doing well. I'm the mayor. I mean, I think if I report a concern, maybe somebody could address it in five or six months. I mean, I reported on two occasions, an illegal massage parlor. That's been going on for five and six months now. Is there a reason why we can't get anybody in that department to actually use the system, investigate it, update the system, send me a notification, like any other resident, by the way, and close the ticket? Is there a reason why?
I'll check tomorrow with the person in the construction department who is responsible. I'll check with the director to see who he has assigned to address the report in progress. I think some of them are closed. It's just that they might not have closed them, so it shows that they're in progress. But you know what? Tomorrow, I'll give the construction department a call and get an update.
And then, yeah, so just, so you talk about the continued rollout. Asset management, we have no records in it. Business registration, no records in it. CCO, we know that's the part that's waiting again. Adult license, we have no records in it. General Services Work Order, somebody's using that one. IT tickets, no records in it. Pet licenses, no records. Rental COs, no records, but that could be part of the forthcoming rollout. Reporter Concern is actually being utilized, but it's down 54%. Use of municipal facilities, zero. And vehicles and equipment, zero. I still don't think, and you can see this with the manager, that's a today. For some reason, I'm getting my updates every single Sunday, so I have to log in specifically to the, to figure how that happens. If we could just get an update.
The only other thing that I would just add to it is that the residents that have used it, and I know maybe this is under the law, we have no complaints from any resident in town.
I don't believe they're using it.
Contrary to popular belief. The 900 that we have been able to log in, closed.
A lot of those are manually entered in-house.
Correct.
And we use it.
But you can't say residents are using it. If somebody calls up and makes a complaint and is standing here.
Yeah, but we're still tracking. I mean, it's still getting tracked.
That's a good one.
Look, I mean, on another note, Mike, have you ever signed the contract?
I'm taking.
Did you sign the contract?
Taking exception to the matter.
You're not answering the questions.
You could ask when I'm done talking. This was my topic.
Now, you're done talking. That way, you never stop talking.
So I take exception to the fact that you say that the residents are using it. The residents clearly aren't using it. I'm a resident, contrary to popular belief out there. I live here, and I'm a resident, and I use it. And if I can't get any answers in five or six months, I mean, I would think that we would want to jump all over to legal massage parlor, especially if the mayor reports it twice in six months.
Wouldn't that be the police?
I think if my job's reporting, then where it gets routed?
I'm saying, you know, but I mean.
Whatever. It gets routed. I don't route. I don't route. All I do is submit. It gets routed inside here somewhere.
Yeah, maybe on your next conversation with them, you could have something where after 30 days, if, if something stagnant for 30 days, like a red flag pops up or something, and.
An alert.
An alert, something like that. I don't know, whatever you want to call it. And that alerts whoever, you know, whatever department, whoever, that, hey, this hasn't been.
We're nearly in the rhythm of the system, by the way.
Yeah, no, exactly.
Yeah, I wanted to mention something alongside what Vinnie was mentioning.
Excuse me. I would like to go next.
I think.
No, no, no.
I'm off.
Excuse me. No, I just, I just need to understand something. We haven't spent time. You haven't signed the contract. I don't get this. What, you know, you're going after this. I got, I got a council chambers here that I still can't do hybrid meetings. We can't do call-ins. John can't do call-ins. What's it going to take for us to get two calling lines here? This is ridiculous.
I'm going to say what it would take. If you showed up to the last council meeting when we voted on noticing the meetings.
Oh, excuse me, Mike. I was sick.
Okay.
I didn't go to Florida. I didn't come back with people who had COVID, and I didn't go to a freaking meeting. No. I got sick here, so I couldn't attend, and we've been asking for this for six to eight months. In fact, we used to do it for 18 years.
Put it on focus and discuss it.
I don't need to discuss it. We're here right now. Let's discuss it.
Now, I would love to discuss things. I just, I, we can take a moment and just remind ourselves that, you know, we have a responsibility to discuss things. Screaming, arguing, that's not going to get us anywhere. We all want the best for the township. So if you got out of respect for all the residents that are here, we need to address ourselves with more respect. I understand, councilman, that you were bothered. I was in the middle of a sentence. And, you know, I want you to have the opportunity. I understand.
He basically came and said, I couldn't talk. I didn't even finish.
Absolutely. And I understand that, and everybody wants to speak. But this is the opportunity that we have. I just really want to make sure that we do this in a productive way. And so, Anthony, going back to the process of how we, you know, I don't know what it looks like from the receiving end, right? Is there a dashboard where someone looks at, you know, I, first thing I do every morning, I log into work. I have a dashboard, and I can see anything that's outstanding, just like you log into your email. Does that look that way when somebody logs in?
Yes. I have a login. For instance, like I said, report concerns, there was 866 report concerns logged in from the exception.
So you can see all of the different.
And there's 111 are still open.
Outstanding.
Out of, say, 866. So that means, you know, so the dashboard does show all.
Dashboard also shows who logged in, too. So Anthony, if you want to look and see which departments are even logging in, you would know. There's no point in us going through the process that we went through to find a company to track this stuff if the departments or employees are not.
And I think the process here, Anthony, what I would want to, you know, from what I do with my employees, for example, is identify where is the leak? What is the hole? What is, what's going on in the process, right? Because everybody has access to this. Everybody can see the dashboard. But if something is there for six months, is it that these things were addressed, but they just don't show up for the resident? Is it that they just were not addressed? And when they get addressed, did they get addressed by somebody who doesn't have access to, to changing the tickets? So would you be able to look into that so that we can identify first what's the challenge?
Yes. So I could, I could say with great confidence, that whether the person pulls it into town hall and we input it, or they input it directly themselves, okay, it's real time. It shows up on my phone, shows up on the public office superintendent's phone, shows up on, and again.
That's a great capability. I love that.
A lot of the, a lot of the application is being addressed within minutes, hours, less than a day. So that's, that's good news. It's a great process.
When you say up being addressed, does that mean somebody acknowledges that that came in, or does that mean somebody is out on the field?
Today, somebody went online and put in a complaint about a heat complaint, obviously in the middle of a heat season. That complaint came in, and that person, you see the response within, within minutes that we were going to send somebody over to check with the landlord and save that.
That's right.
If I may?
Yeah, for sure.
So, Anthony, here's just a recommendation. I'm sure with the capabilities of this system that IT professionals can go in and create automatic monthly reports on what was open, what was closed. And then this way, you don't have to do the work. It'll automatically come out on every 30th day, whatever, whatever you deem.
Absolutely.
And then this way, you can hand it to whoever wants in all different, in all different passions. Open, closed, when it went from point A to point B, whatever. Just, just my.
That's a great point. I actually have my general manager do that every single day to see what's, what's outstanding. I think, obviously, I'm a dreamer. I think that we can run government somehow, you know, with what we can learn from the public sector. But I think that six months is definitely not acceptable. And Anthony, maybe we can consider when we speak with the directors, what is an acceptable time to, for somebody to have a response? I know when I've had, put in requests in person, I usually get a, a response. Hey, this might take a month. This might take two weeks. So I think that's helpful for the resident to know.
Absolutely.
What this can potentially take.
Absolutely.
Okay. I just have one question.
Sure, yeah.
Did the contract ever get signed?
I don't believe I signed it.
Okay. So basically, the council voted to have it signed, and you refused to sign?
Well, if you want to tell the full story, the town attorney.
No, no, that's the full story, Mike.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll tell, I'll tell the resident public the full story.
You go on to the next thing, Mike. You were the creator of all kinds of weird shit.
I mean, very good.
I know.
Do we need a reasons, maybe? Do we need a reasons?
No.
I just, I honestly refuse to.
I'd like to answer a question.
I know, would love to hear the answer, but I refuse to sit in a meeting where people are now using foul language. This is disrespectful to everyone.
I agree.
Absolutely not.
Question was posed to me with an I on the contract. I put my signature on contracts. Township attorney, refusal of contracts. Township attorney sent not one, not two, but potentially three emails to the town manager. Do I believe yourself, we're, we're on that, and to the, and to the company trying to get clarification on certain terms? He was never answered, therefore, I can't, I can't sign.
I believe they were, but that's a picture for.
Okay, next up. Councilmember Robell.
We have Peter Lupo here to discuss what's going on with 5G, the possibilities of projected revenue, as well as the status of the heat. And just, can you just give us an overview of what's happening with 5G?
Should be sure that microphone's on.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can I move it to my desk for a perfect piece of clarity?
You're fine.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Peter Lupo. I own Hotlight Communications. I'm a telecommunications attorney. I was retained by Belleville about six months ago to represent you with upcoming 5G revolution is coming to New Jersey, specifically Eastern New Jersey, mostly Bergen, Essex, Hudson Counties, counties, Millsix Counties. And I've been in constant communications with Andy Icanno, who are the town manager, and Kelly, your township clerk, has been very responsive. So just to give you a quick review, I think Kelly handed out some information about 5G. This was given 5G to the league municipalities. I held an informational seminar. It's very lengthy, so I'm just going to kind of go over it quickly for the sake of brevity and pretty much give you like the keynote parts of it. So right now, we, everyone's operating off the 4G. That's what we're, phones that we're operating on. Some of your phones may say 5G. It's not 5G. They're, it's part of the evolutionary part of it. You're not operating on 5G. So what is happening now is a big shift in a way wireless carriers are running their networks. So historically, they've been on giant 150, 200-foot-high utility monopoles or towers. You see them across the parkway. You see them on rooftops. That's now switching to a new dynamic, a new paradigm for rolling it out. They're now going to be on utility poles, conventional 38-foot-high utility poles in the public rights way on streets, on your sidewalks. And the reason for that is a shift in the way of spectrum that's being used. Instead of using two to three gigahertz, they go up to 20 to 40 gigahertz. And that's millimeter-wave-sized technology. And the reason why they have to go to utility poles is because this high-frequency millimeter-wave technology only propagates for about a football field apart versus the big towers that go for about three, four, or five miles. So the propagation footprint is much smaller than it has been. So that's why there's going to be this big paradigm and things being shifted. So what I was born on for, hopefully, was to help out with, one, drafting ordinance that's complying with the FCC. That would go, that would be 5G ordinance, a whole new one. Typically, I'd put it under, is streets and, streets is usually where it goes under most of the suicide way, but the township attorney may have different ideas about where to put that. The other thing I would do is revise your existing 4G ordinance. It's outdated. It was drafted in the early 2000s. There's been a lot of changes in the FCC. So two things I would do is revise your existing 4G ordinance and then introduce a new 5G ordinance with, of course, you probably would discuss that, and township attorney. But those are two things to propose. Make sure you're properly prepared when Verizon's and AT&amp;T's coming your rights away. So I represent Millsix County, Asa County, and Bergen County, and I represent about 50 municipalities, including Belleville. And that's what I do throughout the state for the municipalities that I represent. Some of the other services I do is I come before a town, eventually you're going to be approached by one of the carriers. They want to put all these small cells, maybe 30, 50 in Belleville, and invariably, they have questions reasonably about health and safety, have questions about zoning, appearance. And some of the things I would do for you when the time comes, is to come before here, when you have residents asking some of your concerns about health and safety. I'll make sure I go to the carrier, make sure you have FCC health and safety reports uploaded. I'll manage a GIS website, so any resident could go to Belleville and maybe go, perhaps, potentially, go to the telecommunications tab. They could go there and see a full map of Belleville and have little pin cushions on there, little red dots for AT&amp;T, for example, blue for Verizon, sorry, other way, red for Verizon, blue for AT&amp;T. They could click on it, and they could see a full report. It'd be a PDF they could click on and see a full health and safety report. You could look and search for that by your street coordinates, street address, any, any number of ways. And a resident could hopefully feel safe that they know they have a specific health and safety report for the street. Again, this would be 38 feet high. Because if you're on the second floor of a building, let's say your house, you'd be looking 20 feet away out of the tetter, and invariably, people would be concerned about that. If you're a commercial resident in town and you look at that, they're going to be concerned and have questions about it. So those are some of the things I do for the municipality. And that's kind of a, kind of a bare-bones kind of discussion about what 5G is, why it works that way. But if you have any specific questions, in the interest of brevity, I'd like to try to say those are questions you have, Mayor, members of the town council.
Are they going on any private properties, or this is only in the right of way?
Very good question. Historically, there was always on, on private property, rooftops, private land. But here, it's almost exclusively going to go on, yeah, on public rights way. Although many, many very, very small circumstances, they may very well be on private property. But I would say 99.9% public rights way. And then, important part of Belleville, it's a revenue generating thing, a happy, hopefully, topic for, for the, you know, for the residents and for the town, is you get to charge money for it. So you own, you don't own the utility poles, you don't pay for installation, but you do own the public rights way. You have a right to collect on that. So that's going to be extra revenue for Belleville, hopefully offset a little taxes as well. That's something that I would negotiate for Belleville with the carrier, the important ordinance, maximum FCC permitted allowance for each one of these small cell sites. But good question.
Yeah. Question. Can you clarify, is this a matter of when? This is not a matter of if. Are we discussing this, every carrier is transitioning to 5G? Is that a fact?
Absolutely fact, yes. So they're on 4G right now. T-Mobile already rolled out the very low-end 5G. It's the mid-band, it's what's called sub-six. It's not the full potential of, it's called sub-six because it's less than 6 gigahertz. As I mentioned before, the better end of it, the high, what's being rolled out of Cliffside Park, what's being rolled out Bayonne right now, who I represent, is going to be the high-millimeter wave, which is going to be the ultra-fast wideband you hear about. That's going to allow for autopilot cars. It's going to allow for, you know, all sorts of, you know, drones that people deliver from Amazon. There's a company now, this kind of interesting stuff, there's a company called Flirty right now that just got FAA approved to do drone delivery. So you go to, I think, 7-Eleven and maybe, maybe CBS are doing trial runs of these things. So they have permission to do it. And once they have this high-fidelity, quick bandwidth right now, the people do drone deliveries. Right, you have, you're sick with COVID, got a bit, and you need some sort of medication, they can deliver it to your front, front steps with a, with a drone. So yes, that is the future. That is something they will definitely be transitioning to. One little caveat, I have this little more wonky tactical thing. You might have heard recently that the FAA had a complaint against FCC. There's issues with the sub-six, which I just mentioned. It's more the mid-band stuff than the high-end stuff with conflicting it with altimeters and planes. So there might be a moratorium on rollout of the sub-six, but certainly, the highest structure which I'm working on right now is being rolled out.
So I, great, good information. There is also another ordinance out there. It's a wireless communication. If you haven't looked at it, feel free, if I can. It's an ordinance that we have that does address antennas currently.
Yep.
Height, stuff like that, just so you put, you know, information for you. But going back to 5G, dabbled a little bit. So 5G came out about two years ago, my understanding. We currently have it here in Belleville today with Verizon. If you do have a 5G phone, you will connect 5G. That's validated. It, it's there today. It's, you know, 5G is new, two years, I get it. And it took the place for a consumer, to my understanding. Now, I think it's going in more of an enterprise. They want to do more private enterprise stuff, like you said, for Amazon and stuff like that. So the revenue generator with antennas and stuff like that, I think it's great. But the efforts, I mean, it's all good, but besides the revenue generating of it, we have no complaints. I shouldn't say Kelly or Anthony. Do we get complaints about how many towers, the size of towers, and anything like that, right? So really, the 5G, where I'm just going with it is, 5G was built for the consumer, you all. When you're walking around, you're out in town, that's what it does. So just wanted to give you my two cents on what I know about it, and hopefully, we can do good together.
Absolutely. Good, good, definitely good insights.
And I do know, yeah, they come with different high, medium, lows, all the different frequencies across super 5G and stuff like that.
That's correct. And there's just a quality, like, oh, my Verizon, they have Verizon search, and I think right now it shows 5G, two bars. But I can tell you, this is not the, the ultra-high, high band. Yeah.
You're right. I mean, you're 100% right, but it's here, right? And that's, and the carriers are rolling it. So.
Correct. What I'm saying is, what's going to shift right now, will come to Belleville, is the utility poles, which a carrier, like, for example, Fairview has a bunch of Cliffside Park, they've just put in seven utility poles in Cliffside Park and Bergen County. So those are things that are coming to Belleville. Right now, they're going on the conventional towers. You mentioned before, the private property and rooftops. That's what they're running 5G on right now. But the, when they get to true 5G, the ultra-wideband, that's when they're going to install the utility.
And if I'm not mistaken, that goes in highly, high densely populated areas like Newark.
This is exactly in the hotspots.
Right, well, I look at us, yeah, but, yeah, but like you said, but the other counties and the other towns are. Newark, I believe, is, is up with the high frequencies and going that way.
They did. And if you go on 21, you go to McCordell Highway, they've installed a few. There's, there was a big litigation with Verizon AT&amp;T, just came out of Jersey City in Hudson County, of course, also installing 5G antennas. But certainly, Belleville Square in that area of high interest because of population density, wealth, and there's a number of factors. I was talking to Steve before about that, that some of the factors that the carriers care about. So they're going to be revenue, how quickly, how densely populated areas are, the wealth of the people. People here are likely to be Verizon AT&amp;T customers. So this is going to be an area of great interest for Essex County, Joe, but definitely Belleville.
And you, and you head off, anything with the FAA or FCC, any regulation, any regulation areas? Because that's a big thing right now, right? With the regulations, they are tightened down.
Absolutely.
So you would be that person in the middle making it.
To sure that we're compliant.
Correct.
And exactly. And some of the other things they do, I forgot to mention, I think is very important, is when these utility poles come in, and you're talking about regulations, make sure that site triangles, when they have utility poles put up, make sure that when they put it there, I get the submission from AT&amp;T and Verizon. I ensure that they don't block people's drive. They say, come out, it's not making an obstruction. Site was good, the site triangles. And make sure that we don't get into ramps with handicap, American, Americans with Disabilities Act, DEA ramps. So I make sure it's complying with that, just FAA and FCC regulations, but also with local regulations as well.
Thank you.
I get a lot of emails from concerned citizens, not here, Belleville, but throughout, warning us of the dangers associated with 5G. Yeah, we're almost out of time, but can you just speak to that for a few minutes, a minute or so?
Yeah, absolutely. I was just in.
These are well-organized efforts to get legislators to stop the implementation of 5G.
Yes, Mayor, you're absolutely right. Some of the things, I was up with South River. And South River had a lot of angry residents with pitchforks and torches, and I thought I had run out of the place. And the police over there had to, like, give me an escort out. A little bit of exaggeration, but definitely, as you mentioned there, it's definitely a very strong organization and concern amongst people. They, I've seen studies from Italy, from the EU, about potential causes of heart murmurs, cancer, and a whole lot of things. But in the end, the FCC has a final say. They're the final authority on what is considered to be health and safety. They are the standard, and irrespective of any kind of, you know, individual doctors or commissions or other international organizations that come up with concerns, a caution about it, the FCC's final say on whether or not the emissions is safe enough for what they call continuous human exposure. So yes, Mayor, you're absolutely right. Definitely concerns by people who raise these organized efforts, but in the end, we can only comply with the FCC.
And on that same note, Mayor, I, the countries that have been using this, you know, how many years of data do we have in regards to making these decisions?
Good question. Not many years. So FCC, the 5G hasn't rolled out this millimeter wave really in any real, any kind of real capacity. And I would say it's just really at the forefront right now. So there's that much way of doubt on it. And I, and I honestly don't get.
I mean, I, I understand you might not be able to give me a number, but we're talking about a year? We're talking about five years of data? Like, what's the?
You're talking about a year of data.
A year of data.
Yeah, yeah, very little. It's at the 45.
So we can understand why people might have certain concerns, because one year of data might not be enough to know long-term effects. And that's, because I have received many emails before I even knew what 5G was, you know, so just trying to figure out what that means for our people and what questions to ask. Because right now, I'm at the point where I don't know what I don't know. So I would like to know what that means for every month, so one, about one year.
One thing I'll also say, that I know the World Health Organization, some UN agencies are going to come up and report their own about the potential side effects or the safety of 5G. Hasn't that been released yet? It's still compiling data. But right now, there's no real definitive report from any world agency right now. All we have right now to work from is FCC.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very formal.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is W.R. Defense.
Next item on our agenda is Deputy Mayor's意见.
Thank you. I wanted to just hopefully engage in a respectful and productive conversation with my council colleagues from the perspective of the stigma-free initiative. As you know, we are all entering year two of, you know, post-COVID world. And that's, we have to consider what the effects it has created on people, not just on a physical aspect, but also on the mental health aspect of everyone. So I wanted to bring up this study that found out that the anxiety increase was, has been 50% and 44% in depression. But that's six times higher than before COVID, 2019. But this number even goes higher for people between ages 18 to 29. 65% increase in anxiety and 61% in depression in people between the ages of 18, 29. So with that information, I would just like the opportunity to begin a dialogue, to consider a more well-rounded approach to how we serve our community. You know, mitigation strategies are great, and, you know, I would consider also the opportunity to continue incorporating things that promote well-being, mental health. And I think we've done a great job of remaining open, continuing to host in-person events that just really raise the morale and bring the community and makes people not feel fully, like, isolated. So, you know, my proposal is that, you know, we continue to explore that. And as we continue to have other work sessions, I might bring other opportunities that we can create, like. So I love the fact that we have continued to be open, and I think that we have to continue to keep that in mind in the effects that those things have in people as numbers continue to change and new data. There's so much that we now know that we didn't know. So I, and I know many of you might experience the same thing. You get emails in the middle of the night from residents are concerned and maybe concerned about completely different things, right? But the constant is the fear. People are fearful, and this fear creates this fight-or-flight response, even within ourselves, right? When you just can't even engage in a logical conversation because you're reacting instead of responding. So this is where this initiative through our stigma-free approach has come up, which is called From Hope to Courage, with the mindset of bringing people from fear to hope and from hope to courage, right? To not operate in that space of fear, because when the full town is, when everyone's well-being is the most important thing for us, and we have, residents are happier, we have residents that can actually, within ourselves first. So I am hosting this 21 Days of Gratitude. And why gratitude? Because you can't be grateful and scared, you can't be grateful and angry at the same time. And gratitude, it's so much more than just saying thank you, but it's really finding what we actually have and saying, I'm grateful for this, right? Being able to see past that, look at everyone's, you know, where we are and what we have. And this 21 days began January 9th all the way till January 30th. And what we've done is also during these 21 days, put together a group of specialists, completely at no cost, on a virtual platform, providing, social workers providing support, Father Yvonne providing daily inspiration from a religious and faith perspective, daily themes about what we can be grateful for. And so, you know, this is a consideration to continue doing things like this. I would love for everyone to participate, to share this on your social media. That creates this opportunity for us to operate not from a fight-or-flight response. I mean, we saw that right here. I think we had a sample of that. This isn't who we are, we're better than that. And when you focus on mental health, when you focus on gratitude, we can be better human beings. We can acknowledge the humanity in each other, and then we can serve our people better, and then the town can be happier. So that is, if people want more information about it, you know, hope2courage.com. Like I said, I'm sharing this also on my Depremeur page, on social media platforms. But it's really my desire to continue hosting events like this that give people the access to more mental health opportunities. So, thank you. Any questions?
You and I have had this conversation when we did stigma-free. It wasn't just about passing a resolution and applying. It was about actually doing so. And one of the managers, I mean, at least for our employees here, the manager had an initiative about a year ago, where our employees can seek some kind of help.
Yes, that's great.
But I've had conversations with the manager, Police Department, in fact, I do think that our state government, we do fail the average resident that needs help, or needs mental health, or needs psychological help. I do think that we do them a disservice, because we don't offer, we don't offer the services that they need.
Absolutely. And the idea in this is creating new habits, right? That not everything is like, I have to go to therapy. But the idea that there are people here providing yoga classes, right? There are people providing meditation, 15 minutes every day online, where you can just really tap into this, because it's not the one thing that makes you fearful. This is about a stacking of habits that either make you feel fearful or empowered. And I think for us, we notice that, right? You get up, you turn on the news, first thing you have is fear, rather than just really taking care of yourself, fitness, what you eat, what you put into your body. Because as we can see, you know, comorbidities in terms of the results with people that have been infected with COVID, right? There's a big part of that that has to do with physical health and also mental health. So thank you for listening, and I just wanted to bring this up, okay?
Amen. Thoughts, anyone, thoughts, suggestions? Maybe you could link to that on the council side?
Yeah, that's a great, great, thank you, yeah, for sure. The website's already up, yes, sir, thank you.
We do a lot, through the Mayor's Wellness Initiative, we do the Walk the Word.
Yes, which is fantastic. Even the 5K, I think those are townwide activities that we continue to sponsor, just seem.
Townwide yoga, we do that a little year, but yeah, I agree, let's push it out.
Agreed.
Okay, anybody else? We're going to move on then. Next item on our agenda is reporting to the manager, Mr. Manager.
That's me. First, let me wish everyone a very happy New Year, and thank you for coming out in frigid weather. You're all heroes. Talking about heroes, I'd like to thank again, we had our first snowstorm of the season. Bobby and the Public Works team did an excellent job. Our police chief was feeling a little under the weather, my deputy chief stepped in. Again, Public Works police did an excellent job. This past Friday, I had a family commitment outside of the state, and I asked Deputy Chief Frank Papiani to step in to serve as acting town manager. And to no surprise, his leadership during the height of the storm and everything, he was in constant communication. So I wanted to certainly send out a big thank you to our deputy chief, who's here today, served as the acting town manager. It's no surprise to me, your leadership was stellar.
Just, can I make an announcement?
Oh, absolutely.
If he goes for acting pay, it's going to be a pay cut, so.
I would not go for acting pay there. I wouldn't do it.
I was going to actually donate my pay back to that.
Thank you.
Staying with the frigid and cold season that we're in, PSCNG just notified us of a new program. It's an annual program, actually. We're going to have it up on our website tomorrow. And residents are, and it's based on income eligible, but residents can receive up to $7,500 for programs to winterize their homes. This could be, you could qualify for new windows, new doors, heating equipment, even something as simple as an electronic thermos, which does not only save a lot of energy and heat, but it is more efficient. So we're going to get that up on our website, it's a great program. I looked at some of the medium as far as income eligible, and I think it would be a great, great program for Belleville. And last on my list, this time, I do want to also report that on December 29th, we had our celebrated sale. We had approximately $400,000 in outstanding taxes due to the town. And our tax office, Mary and the crew, also did an excellent job. We're at 99% each year, and I don't know what our record is, but it's probably over 10 years that, as of December 29th, 99% of our taxes have been paid, which obviously is a great fiscal line. And that's the short end of my report. Shortly, a moment, questions.
So I've had some experiences over the last two weeks relative to the ambulance. And, you know, I talked a little bit about this. I know we have a second ambulance. I know at that time, you used to run both ambulances, you know, depending upon the amount of staff and stuff like that. I know when the chief had his little altercation, we actually had to drive him because the second ambulance wasn't available. My neighbor just, you know, had a problem this weekend, we had to call Nutley in, and thank God we have the mutual aid, which we greatly appreciate. But, you know, if at all possible, I think we should find a way, especially in the middle of all this, you know, uptick in the COVID, to see if there's a way that we can staff that second ambulance. I think that would be advantageous to everybody. That's all, I'm thinking, if we could do that.
I clearly understand what the message is, and I know, and certainly Chief Oliver is here as well, so. In the event, vacations, firefighters cause sick, things of that nature, we don't have the second bus, and it would require overtime. And that's probably in some of the, so the short answer is, we could always do whatever it takes to have two buses. It may cost us some additional overtime, but certainly, we could certainly sit down with the chief and see what we can do.
Yeah, because I know we lost about 13 people last year, and we only hired about five or six. So we should look at, maybe looking at full staffing these people somehow.
Absolutely.
That would be my.
Is there a certain time of the day when we use ambulance more?
I know, I know the records that we have, the chief can actually do a report for us.
Yeah, maybe.
I know that the chief can answer that very easily, just by taking a look at it. Everything is documented, and to do something like that, yeah, absolutely.
It's pretty random, it's pretty random when they call, but you know, obviously cold weather and storms, it's up to them. I'd like to have our report.
Question on a different topic. I know usually in November, December, we tell the status of our next year's budget. So we're January 11th, I'm assuming budget sheets are out, can you just give us an update on the budget?
So.
I know tonight we're passing an emergency budget, and I don't want to go past April or February.
No, so all of our departments have submitted their first draft of the budget. Kim and I, we haven't done anything, only we take the first shot at it. And then, I know we do have a budget committee, so we'll call for a meeting shortly, and we'll take a look at the first 2022 budget.
Okay. Any other questions, the manager? Nope. Next item on the agenda is reporting to Mayor. I'm abbreviated because we do have some overlap, but one person in particular is not here today, is our fine police chief. Just want to wish him well. I know he would love to be here with us in this cold night. I'm sure he's watching us and quite comfortable. But I do want to wish him a speedy recovery. We did have snow, DPW, great job. Altered side of street park is now suspended until spring of 2022. Speaking of 2022, you'll probably hear about it later, but the 2022 calendars are out. Much anticipated calendars are out. I received mine via postal patron. Somehow the post office was able to get them delivered. I don't have much faith in the post office these days, but I did get mine, I know some people received theirs. We do have an update from the DEP. A couple of weeks ago, myself, Deputy Mayor DePena, I believe Councilman Graziano was there for the most recent walk-around with our legislative team. We had our entire L29 legislative district there, our senator, our two, seven people. We also had about eight representatives from DEP. And it wasn't just a walking tour or talking tour. They've since issued a letter, they've since issued a, I don't want to call it a cease and desist, but they've kind of told the cemetery to stop doing a couple of things until they work it out. So that's good news. We're not going to end there, though, we're going to make sure that they hold everybody's feet to the fire, that's in any kind of violation there, so. And that, just to put a caveat on that, a letter that went out to the DEP, it was nothing new, by the way. They found some documentation from many, many years ago that the cemetery didn't file correctly or didn't act appropriately from, I mean, I read it a couple of weeks ago, maybe it was a decade old, but they re-engaged that. So nothing necessarily new, but they really haven't started to dig into what we've asked them to dig into yet, that was just their first pass, so. At least they showed up, at least they're acting, at least they're in communication with the cemetery, that's something that we like to see. If you saw my post on Facebook last week, we are experiencing a lot of delays in COVID testing. I say "we," I mean a private company that's here in Belleville. Township does not do testing. Township has at least one company, I think some pharmacies even do it themselves. Delays are nationwide, eight, 10, nine days. That's how long delays are out nationwide. Myself and the manager have a very frank conversation with this one company, and they've limited the amount of appointments they'll take so that they can service the people that they have. And they've since been expanding that, which is actually good, if you want most people tested as people possibly have. That's it for news, so recent events. We had a fantastic winter festival, can't imagine it was that long ago, but we had a great winter festival, probably one of our best events in a long, long time, winter festival and Christmas tree lighting, that was done in conjunction with our partners in the Board of Education. Fantastic job, I think people are really starting to like our events and expecting quality events, and it's something that I don't mind providing them. I think that we're doing a good job when it comes to that. Speaking of great events, just a couple of days ago, maybe five, six days ago, was also the deputy mayor's birthday. We had a huge Three Kings Day celebration with council. It was not for her birthday, it was, her birthday happened to fall on Three Kings, or she happened to be born on Three Kings.
Yes.
But another great event, up at the high school, we probably counted 750 cars north of 300-plus gifts handed out to children. Thousands of spectators coming by, well-done event, took two and a half hours in and out, it was great. And for those of you who don't necessarily realize that, we don't have a department here in town hall that just manages these events. The person that jumps in is the person that becomes the coordinator. And it's certainly not her job, but I just want to acknowledge and thank Jackie for jumping in the last two years and organizing this event.
Thank you, Jen.
It's a fantastic event, it's not in her duties, it's not in her title, has nothing to do with anything, but it's a great service, I think, that we do for the township. So another great event. Upcoming events, this coming Thursday, vaccine distribution event, not being done through our health department, it's being done by local pharmacies, but we are going to utilize the senior building for that. Information is up on the town website. And even though it does not mention boosters, boosters are going to be included in Thursday's vaccine program. That will be done at the senior building. And speaking of our senior building, we have taken the initiative to cancel all senior activities at the senior building through the month of January. One, one of the clubs took it upon themselves early on to do that, the manager then followed up with our own order for that, just until we clear out some of the newer COVID cases. That's it for me, abbreviated report. Next item on our agenda, those committee reports, it's the first meeting in a while, so we get some quick ad hoc committee reports. Councilman Graziano is already on.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So I'd just like to share with everybody the IT update. So as you know, three years ago, so we started a huge upgrade for Belleville, from laptops to network to audiovisual. And I'm glad to say we're actually at the end of that. Last, about a month ago, two months ago, the Firehouse was the last migration over to a business-grade internet services and a commercial core, where before it used to be residential. So that being said, in doing that, we looked into one piece of software that they were using, and it was for, oh God. Was it chief? The attendance personal program. So we, after doing some history, looking into it, we see that the police department used what they called the VCS workforce scheduling. So talking to the chief, chief working with chiefs on both sides of the fence, it worked. And it's, again, standardized, it's in the cloud, we take the hardware away. This is where we go, ROI is great. So that being said, thank both police and fire to work together to make that happen. It's an existing piece of software. We leverage it, we looked at it, we used it, and it's a standard. So that said, every building is upgraded from a network standpoint. We did what we could do in the cloud, everyone has new laptops or desktops throughout Belleville. And telephony up at the Firehouse is now four-digit dialing, up to speed, just like it is here. And then in the next coming year, we're going to do, take more steps for other things. But from where we started three years ago to where we are now, it's light years ahead. We are in the 21st century and then some. So thank you all for your support, and we're going to keep moving forward, and thank you all.
Thank you, Tom. I can't take too much credit for that, I was drastically late in signing that contract, too. I know you're aware of that. Until they're ready to be signed, I can't sign them, so. But that has been signed, even though it was way late.
Thank you.
You still didn't see that email. Anybody else?
Just briefly, I wanted to mention on December 15th, I didn't get a chance to bring that up. I participated on the, they had the art program that is hosted at the rec house. It's hosted by one of our residents, her name is Ronia, and she hosts a beautiful program. Our residents are taking advantage of it. I don't think enough people know about this program. And I just wanted to put. And I just wanted to put it out there that she's doing great work. So I was able to see their art and they did a virtual art show. And we're looking for a place to then be able to portray the work that the students are doing at the end of this next session. So I know that the rec does a good job at sharing that, but it seemed like a lot of the residents just really didn't know.
I didn't know.
Exactly. So I wanted to bring it up because I did participate and I think that every parent I've talked to enjoys the program so much. We actually are doing everything with, you know, a smaller group of children so that everyone's safe. But I do think that the kids meet these things and these outlets because as we have discussed before, not every child is necessarily athletically inclined. So these are great programs that I think should continue. So I believe the next session is going to be kicking off in the spring, but they are doing great work at the through the rec in our art program.
Can we get a fly? I didn't know anything about that. Can we get a we had that conversation all the time, but.
Yeah.
Doing great things, we're telling people that we're doing it. Can we can we get a flyer out? Post it on social media, all that good stuff? I didn't know. I mean, I know we did this. I know it's bad.
I'll check with Naomi tomorrow to get whatever information.
For sure.
I'm sure the rec has the info. I don't know how kids got there.
Yeah, they had a waiting list.
I don't know. Okay.
But you're hard to reach out.
Did you? Oh, I didn't know. We just did it today.
Yeah, um, yeah, one more thing also, Mayor. Next, no, this Monday coming up, January 17th, we're doing our annual flag raising for Martin Luther King Jr. And that's going to be at 11 o'clock at Town Hall. I know a lot of people can't make it during the day, so we do ask that if you can't make it, we ask that you could do a act of kindness in celebration of the doctor. So we have donate nonperishable food to a food bank, write a letter of appreciation to a frontline worker, or call or visit a senior citizen. Those are just some suggestions that if anyone wants to do that to celebrate that day.
That information on the website.
It's on the website, yep.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes.
A regular meeting of April 27th, and you wanted to do emergency meeting of man for a week as well.
Sure, we could. Motion move together.
So move.
Motion made in second, move together, clerk Colerole.
Council member Cosrally.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Gazziano.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Schumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Mellon.
Yes. Ordinances for public hearing, second and final reading.
Ordinance number one for public hearing and ordinance amending Chapter 18 land subdivision, Chapter 19 land use procedures, Chapter 20 site plan, and Chapter 23 zoning in the township of Belleville and the county of Essex, New Jersey.
Make a motion for introduction.
Second.
We have a motion made in second for introduction, clerk Colerole.
Council member Cosrally.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Gazziano.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Schumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Mellon.
Yes. Ordinances for public hearing, second and final reading.
Ordinance number one for public hearing and ordinance amending Ordinance Number 3492, creating permanent positions and adopting reclassification compensation plans.
Need a motion of public hearing? Motion.
Second.
Motion made in second of public hearing, clerk Colerole.
Council member Cosrally.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Gazziano.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Schumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Mellon.
Yes, so we have three ordinances on for second, final reading. All three of those ordinances relate to our salary ordinance. We don't just arbitrarily pick dollar numbers to pay people, everything is set by ordinance. Every single December into January, we do this as per contractual obligations. We have multiple unions. Those unions all have to have their salary ordinance amended by whatever their contractual obligated rate is, whether it's two, 2.5, two and a half percent. That's one, two, three different plans here. So that being said, we have the first one up. So questions about this particular ordinance and only this particular ordinance? Mr. Fran Antoni, do you need to come on up?
I just want to know what you're creating, what position you're creating with this ordinance.
I don't believe we are in this one.
We're actually deleting one.
So if you want to give us credit for deleting a 75,000 dollar position, Mr. Fran Antoni, we'll accept that.
What position is that?
I believe that was the environmental.
Sanitation.
Sanitation. It was a position in Health Department. Being deleted, that person was making north of $90,000. We don't want an empty position like that laying around that manager can just pick somebody and fill it, so therefore we're deleting it.
Okay.
So if we're keeping track, we're down $90,000. Mr. Droz.
That's going to be the top. I'm done. No, you can't. I have a 295,000. He may be down 90,000, but he may be going up another 90,000.
Might be.
Is this a new position, economic development representative?
Not on this ordinance.
That's been there?
Not on this ordinance.
Then which one is a specific? That's outline unless.
That's going to be in the white. Isn't that in the white, Anthony?
Yes, I believe that would be number two.
Number two. No problem. I'll be back.
Need a motion to close public hearing? Motion to close?
Second.
Motion made in motion made in second to close public hearing, move for final adoption, clerk Colerole.
Council member Cosrally.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Gazziano.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Schumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Mellon.
Yes. Order number two.
Ordinance number two for public hearing and ordinance creating permanent positions and adopting classification compensation plans.
Need a motion open for public, I guess. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm confused about one thing. I did slightly misspeak when all three of these are not the contractual obligated ones. The first one was the was the health one. These next two are those contractual obligated.
Right.
We have a motion to open public hearing. Second. We have a motion made in second to open public hearing, clerk Colerole.
Council member Cosrally.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Gazziano.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Schumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Mellon.
Yes. Okay, on this particular ordinance, this particular ordinance only. Mr. Droz, you're up.
All right, I'm back. All right, have you heard my question already?
I did. Just repeated the answer.
Okay. Economic development representative, is that a new position being created?
Yes.
I see shaking his head, yes. Okay, who is that position going to?
I do not.
You do not know?
I don't hire.
Um, is that position going to be advertised?
I don't know.
Or is it going to be or is it going to be selectively picked again?
As you know, Mario, our role appears to create the position, create the title.
I know what you have to tell me and what really happens to different things. So you're you're telling me that this is not going to be another handpicked person like the list?
I didn't say that. I said I don't do that.
Yes, you do.
All I do is vote to create position.
You admitted it once before, let's not go there. So you are not advertised. This is not a position you can just grab a friend from your.
I didn't say we're advertising. I don't know if manager has advertised.
Manager, okay, listen.
I don't know if that works.
Are you going to advertise this position, get the best qualified person, not a handpicked person?
Yes.
That's all I needed to know.
That's good. Mr. Fran Antoni.
So I guess you just admitted the 90,000 from the other ordinance have just been offset by this $95,000.
No, Mr. Fran Antoni, normally you go to the high end, you forgot the part where it's at 75,000.
75,000.
That could be a $20,000 savings.
And I'll reiterate the same question that the Droz did. Is this going to one of your associates? I'll be more specific with the initials BB.
I'm not going to play initial games, not the Wheel of Fortune, but I don't do that. I don't hire.
Well, again, I'll make a prediction that that's what you're doing this for, Mr. Mayor.
I'm not doing this to take a vote of the entire council.
I don't even know why we need this position because we have redevelopment, the term Mr., what's his name?
Vannera?
No. The gentleman comes and represents. I forget his name, you know. And I hope you other council people will not vote for this because this is included, this is not just an adjustment to the salary because of negotiations. This has been used all these years to create new positions and sneak them in quietly. And then the town manager appoints and usually say, no offense to you, Mr. Iacona, but you know, I've been in office and I know what goes on, that people pressure on who to appoint, you know. So I hope you, a couple of you councilmen will vote against this ordinance. The other thing in this ordinance is another thing called historical society attorney. What's that all about?
It's probably an old one, been laying around forever. We don't have a historical society attorney.
That's the point.
Well, there's a lot of positions, you know, we don't have.
Well, then, why aren't we going to delete it from this ordinance?
I guess if someone had caught that, we could have. If you recall, the first year or so that I was here, we actually deleted all the board attorneys and deleted a lot of the secretaries, too. That may have just.
I'm not going to argue with the math, but when you did that, I also have a whole list of what you created and what you increased, so let's not go there, Mr. Mayor. You know, my wife don't like it, but I keep a lot of paperwork, so. The so will somebody else, one of you councilpeople. Number one, there's no such thing, we have no such thing in Belleville as a historical society.
Right, therefore we can't have an attorney for it. So how about that?
Well, are you going to be deleted tonight?
Sure we can delete it, no matter what.
Well, then you have to readvertise this.
Right.
This ordinance has to be readvertised because it's wrong, right? And it says 12,000. Now, we do have a historic preservation. One council member who's, I think, has to pay attention, we do have a historic preservation commission, and I believe you are a member, Mr. Cosrally. When is the last time you had a public meeting?
Couple of months ago.
Really? How many did you have last year?
We had our four. You're you're supposed to have four a year is the state minimum. We did.
All right. Why do we if this was meant, I don't see it there, but if this historical society attorney was meant to be the historic preservation commission attorney.
Probably.
Why is he being paid 12,000? Well, was he paid $12,000 when we don't have meetings?
Mr. Fran Antoni, you're not you're not listening to anything you're saying. We we stopped that process a year ago. You were somebody that always complained about overspending and what we do. You never give us any credit when we actually stopped something. That's been stopped for at least a year or so. If they don't have a meeting, they're not paid. Before me, Mr. Fran Antoni, for a decade, whether there was a meeting or not, they got paid. You never complained about it for some reason. But you're going to sit here and complain now that we've actually stopped the payment when there's no meeting. There's no payment if there's no meeting.
Okay.
You have to you have to come to grips with that because that's that's actually a good thing.
I hope so because of that. But what are we going to do about this historical society attorney?
So.
If you're going to amend it, you have to readvertise it.
Yeah, we're not not anything we're going to do today. We'll do it in the future.
And the well, then you're going to leave it in there. You're going to leave an unlesserved position, you're going to vote to leave an unlesserved position.
Mr. Fran Antoni, there's a lot of positions that are not filled, Mr. Fran Antoni, you know that.
Well, then, this is the opportunity to correct them.
So rather than actually give us the credit for the previous ordinance where we actually deleted a $90,000 position, you ignored that, but now you want to delete a $12,000 position because I'm being used. I think we all get it, Mr. Fran Antoni.
I can't spell all the time because what I do, you know, when I double check you on your wrongs, I'm not going to give you credit because I know you've increased it somewhere else. Because all this savings you have, I've still got hundreds of dollars increase to my taxes.
I don't know where, it was a $30 increase last year.
And you're not doing all this, you're not, Councilwoman DePena talks about people with depression. Yeah, one of I talked to them, my neighbors, the senior citizens.
Off the topic, Mr. Fran Antoni.
Your rates, your water rates, 200 to 300%, that's a health initiative that's creating the.
Off the topic, Mr. Fran Antoni, you just know this on this ordinance.
Township physician, who's our township physician?
Doctor Orsini.
Still for 40 years?
That's correct.
What does he do? When did he ever show up?
He doesn't show up, he's on call for us to send employees, things of that nature.
Can you name one single event where he was called for?
We don't call him to come to events, we send employees to him.
And and he seats employees?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I'm asking, because there's some errors in this ordinance, I'm asking you council people to amend it, readvertise it, vote on it when it's correct. And I'm sure there's other things in there that could be corrected. But the economic development representative, we'll make it clear, let's see if BB becomes this person, which is a position, like I said earlier, Dean, what's his name? Dean, I forget his last name. He's been doing our redevelopment stuff, right? So we don't need this position. Now hopefully some of you got the guts to express that position tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on this particular ordinance? Want to close?
Close, let's close and then I'll talk.
Anybody else on this particular ordinance, this particular ordinance only? If not, motion to. Close, close and move for final? Or not, it was closed, right? It was. Let's do a motion to close if you want discussion before. Let's just do a motion to close for now.
Motion to close.
Motion made in second to close public hearing, clerk Colerole.
Council member Cosrally.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Gazziano.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Schumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Mellon.
Yes, discussion.[1524.51]
So, my understanding is that Orsini actually does the physicals for the new employees when they come in? I mean, you can check that and confirm it for him?
That could be, that could be.
But I believe, I believe in that's kind of, kind of one of the things he does. Do you know that chief, I mean?
Who's that?
That Orsini, does he do the physical for you guys?
He does.
New hires? Yeah, for new, so he does for new hires, just so you know. And when they have to come back to work after?
Work is comp, work is comp.
Right, he clears them to come back then. But that's, that's kind of where we're at. Yeah.
Make a motion move for final adoption. Motion maybe?
Second.
And second, to move for final adoption, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Rovell?
No.
Schumel Burke?
No.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes. Orders number four. No, great, three, no, great, three.
Orders number three for public hearing and ordinance creating personal oppositions and adopting classification compensation plans.
Motion open for public?
Second.
Motion made, second to open for public, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Schumel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes. We're blue, right? This is, we're blue? Okay, this is ordinance number three. Any public commenting on this particular ordinance, this particular ordinance only? Seeing one? Yes.
Yeah, I've noticed on this ordinance, some questionable ones, but the one, let's see, water meter reader, sixty thousand five hundred and twelve to sixty seven thousand dollars. Years ago, when we, members were on the council at that time, when we went to the electronic meters on our house, the thing was, we're gonna save a lot of money, because the water meters are read electronically to the air, and we're not gonna need a water meter reader. Why do we still need a water meter reader position?
Mr. Manager? Yeah, so you are correct, and we are able to do it via the net, I guess, so to speak. But again, there's many times where the read doesn't come through. So physically have to send somebody over to see if it's a malfunction, if it was damaged. And it happens a lot during, you know, when people are doing renovations to their house. So we actually have a person and, and that's, he's very, very busy.
And there's, there's that many calls that would require that salary position?
Yeah, because he does a lot more than just, he does a lot more than just what I just said. But as far as reading the meters, you are correct. We do get it through the internet, so to speak. But it does require a physical body to be able and available, not only to go out and inspect the faulty meters, but actually install the new meters. How, if, if a house was built tomorrow, somebody has to go out and sort of hear.
And there's that many calls that require that kind of salary?
And we have a lady who's, yeah.
It's just another ordinance where I think we gotta look at somebody's position, see if they're actually needed, and see if his salary is appropriate with the duties that are being performed.
Anybody else on this particular ordinance, this particular ordinance only?
Motion to close, move for final adoption?
Second.
Motion made, second to close, move for final adoption, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Schumel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes. Uh, Madam Clerk, before we go on to number four, just, I wanna circle back to number two if we can for just one second.
Sure.
We got a couple of councilors vote no on that. I wanna give them the opportunity to not vote against contractual obligated raises.
I think, I think, I think it should be amended, that's, that's why.
Go ahead, fine, you can do it, how do you want amended?
It's gotta be amended, I guess we gotta remove the, you know, what is it, the attorney, right?
Historic society.
Historic society.
There's a lot of positions in there that are not filled, why do we care about that?
Fine, I, I mean, that's been brought up, so I think we should, but I mean, that's.
Uh, Marie?
I, I, I think we should look, you know, some contractual stuff in there, and added some new stuff that we should have done separately. I just, you know, I understand some of it's contractual, we have to do it. You know, I, I have no idea why we do it this way.
That's the only title you care about?
I, I mean, I care about the titles that we don't use, of course, and I care about having new titles slipped in with our contractual. And I think that was a question that Mr. Frantantoni raised, I mean, you know.
So how do you want to amend it?
I, I don't know, what do you want to do? I mean, I, 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 as far as I'm concerned at this point, just leave it as it is. I mean, it's, I understand it's contractual, just leave it as it is. I mean, it passed, right?
Oh, yeah, but you should have the right to, to vote on, on it and.
If it passed.
Marie, do you have anything?
No, no.
No, do you want to amend it?
No.
No. So you're not interested in voting to remove the title, you just wanna vote no?
I think you're just trying to quiz me here, Mr. Mayor, and I said what I had to say.
I'm asking you a question, if you want to remove a title, I wanna give you the opportunity to remove it.
No, don't give me the.
Orders number four.
Mayor, ordinance number four, I have requested a redevelopment attorney and our tax assessor be present. Unfortunately, both are, were unable tonight, so I was just gonna just request if we could table this.
Sure. Motion to amend?
Make a motion to table, second.
Motion made, second, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Schumel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes. Do we hear a public, public comment? Need a motion, open public comment?
Motion open public?
Second.
The motion made, second, open public comment, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Schumel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes, so this is public commenting, any resident has five minutes to speak on whatever they wanna speak about. Compliments, good wishes?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, good one. Uh, Mr. Frantantoni? Just state your name and address for the record, everybody has five minutes.
Phyllis Frantantoni, One Twenty-Nine Mount Prospect Avenue, Belleville. Happy New Year, okay, and healthy one. And I don't think you should try to persuade them to vote your way, let them vote the way they want.
Not how I do it.
If they put their vote in, leave it, don't tell them, do you wanna change your vote, because that's not ethical.
Oh.
All right? Resolution number ten, what property is that?
Is that the Greylock, uh, Washington Avenue?
Yeah. It says six, seven, five, six, ten, Greylock, I think, or Washington Avenue.
Yeah, that's the, uh, Washington Avenue and the Greylock Parkway.
Greylock Parkway.
It's the, uh, the gas station. Contaminated gas.
Sofa builder's gonna build on it, he's gonna have to do a lot of work on it.
He's gonna have to remediate it, because you don't want contaminated ground near your neighbors and your children.
Well, they leave the gas station there and it won't bother anybody. All right, I have one thing I wanna, I'm gonna complain about is the roads. The potholes in these roads are horrendous. I can't even drive my car. If a cop is behind me, there're gonna be a truck driving, uh, ticket. You gotta drive all around, all over the place, I almost hit a bus the other day. One day I hit the curb and I blew my tire because of the potholes are so bad. So I hope that you will fix them and that Public Works will fix them the right way, and not just throw stuff in it and then you drive over and it's flying all over the place. So please, fix some of the potholes, because they are horrendous in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Simple question on this, even though it's an ordinance for introduction.
Sure.
And, um, but what I'm looking at is, is a lot of amendments here. And it's almost like impossible for us to figure out what is happening with this ordinance. Who put this ordinance together? That's my first question. Somebody had to fill every little detail.
That would be Mary Ann Arflaner.
Who?
Mary Ann Arflaner.
Oh, the planner put that together? I mean, what I, what I don't understand is, how are you going to vote on this? Do you know every detail of every amendment here, there's like twenty of them here? I mean, you're gonna vote on something? You may be voting to demolish Marie Burke's house or something, maybe doesn't sound, but nobody knows that. None of you know what's going to be in any of these amendments?
Don't say none of us know, all right?
Well, maybe you know, I don't think anybody else knows.
I read my packet.
So you've just told me that you probably put, were helpful in this.
I just told you to read my packet.
Yeah, I know you're smiling, that's your lie.
I just told you to read my packet when it comes up.
So you're gonna really vote on this? How, how can I find out every amendment on this? I like to read every amendment on this, how do I get it?
That's why it's on for first reading, give the opportunity, we have two weeks, if not, we skip a meeting to actually make sure.
No, that's not, but I, but I, I'd like to know, because to me, I don't know, I don't trust it, to me, it just, uh, it could be selected for certain individuals and things like that. But anyway, we're gonna move on to that, but I do wanna go through them myself. On the resolution number ten that came up before, how big of a unit apartment are they looking to put up on that corner? And then a contaminated property?
I don't think that's, we're even close to that.
Okay. All right, um, the calendar, who had input into the calendar? I'm sorry, who had, I gotta take this down, who had input into the calendar?
Every, every single council member had the opportunity.
Did everybody have it?
Yes.
We all got an email asking for pictures?
I mean, not for anything, somebody called me up and told me that you alone have forty-four to forty-five pictures, I didn't have time to count.
I have one.
You can only have one. I think that's a little discriminatory against you, Marie.
Oh, let me ask a question, Marie, how many pictures did you submit?
How many?
Yeah.
A few.
Okay.
Never went through.
But not really, I mean, there's more, there's better pictures to put in than of yourself, or forty-four pictures, maybe forty-five, I don't know.
Fifty-two.
The only other thing I have to bring up is GovPilot, every meeting that I come to, you have an issue with GovPilot.
Do. And, still doesn't work, by the way, still can't use the GPS function, the street still.
But how come you don't have a pilot, have a problem with the guy that does your public relations, that does the press relations?
Because if you see our press, he does a great job.
But no, because you recommended him here, is that the reason?
No, actually, Mario, no, that's not true, Mario.
That's not, that's not what I heard, somebody say it here.
How about you go back, every single meeting we've had since July first, two thousand eighteen has been live streamed. I put on a work session item, we had one, two, three companies came in to present to us. One of those companies actually ran my campaign and didn't get the work, Jaffe got the work.
Well, that's good for a change. Anyway, but there.
Ask a question, I give you a straight answer and it's just.
I know, but the problem is, I don't need to leave half your answers, that's the whole problem.
Go home tonight and watch the meeting from probably two thousand eighteen, nineteen. They sat right here, three different vendors, a resolution came on, we appointed one.
The only other thing is, I wish you would just tone down the way you talk to the manager here, it's totally unprofessional.
Oh, I got it. This is bizarrely. Miss Leish.
Good evening, we're on Fleischman Thirty-Three Main Street, first of all, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Okay, so, let's start off with a good year. Can we all take a chill pill and don't eat our bichos this evening? Everybody, council, mayor, people, come on, it's a new year, come on, people, we're trying to be good. I, and yes, I'm sorry, don't mean to crouch if you, be mayor, be mayor, but you can be aggravated and be, you know, happy by yelling at insurance companies. Couple of things, number one, the, like Mr. Frantantoni said, the streets. The, the potholes do really need to be addressed. I've brought to the previous meetings about the pothole near Lidl just before twenty-one, so that needs to be looked into, I'm sure probably others. And again, I know everyone's working to do the best they can. Um, that, and again, I do wanna give everybody credit, because in the past, nothing was done in this town. Okay? Prior administrations, and please, Mr. Mayor, I beg of you, please stop throwing the prior administration under the bus. If you have a problem with prior administrations, I'm telling you do, because you just got done saying nothing got done before you. No, but, but I also yelled at them for all the years.
That's true.
Okay? Please, some of the former, formerly, some of the former council members are still under council. It's rude, it's disrespectful. You're literally, you're literally turning around saying, here, we're blaming the prior administration, but some of them are still people, are on there. No, 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 but in the, your tone, your, your, the words sometimes, you know, again, some of the council members are no longer here to defend themselves. You know, unfortunately, we've lost a couple of them. You know, so let's be nice. The last two years have been extremely stressful for everybody, with COVID, with this, with that. And I give you guys credit for keeping the town open and keeping the town running, because West Orange Town, uh, Town Hall still isn't open. It's ridiculous, my mother's like, were they ever gonna reopen it? I'm like, no. Um, but it's just little things like that, so we can all just try to be nice and try to get along. And again, prior history, running down prior programs through GovPilot. I know you don't like it, every time I've called, I've got the response, I've got the response.
The whole point of GovPilot, you don't call, you actually have to use it.
Well, you, you write in, whatever, you know, call in, write in, anytime we've addressed a concern through GovPilot.
Have you addressed the pothole on Lidl with GovPilot?
I believe we have.
And I don't think it's been resolved, has it?
But again, there could be.
That's my frustration, that's all.
Right, but also, there's other situations, because again, that may be working on, because I still don't know if that is the private property of that condominium complex, or that is the town, that does need to be addressed, so.
Manager can answer that question, I'm sure.
Go ahead, we'll bully.
No, I would just need to know the exact address, I mean, I, I know where you live and I know what you're talking about, I'd have to physically see it.
Right, like I say.
If it's their property, it's their responsibility, it's top property, it's their responsibility.
I don't think we've put it through GovPilot, because again, I'm not sure where the property lines, because like I said, it's on the streets, but like I said, it's right out of their driveway.
You can put it on GovPilot for us to review and get back to you, with your answer.
Sure, I mean, like I said, I think, I think it's a good program, you know, I think everybody just needs, like I said, relax. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frantantoni?
Yeah, do I need to go on GovPilot to demand my money back for paying for this campaign flyer, which was called a calendar?
I think you've used that one every year for the last three years, Mr. Frantantoni.
Well, because it's true, I mean, the people, my tenants come, I always put it on the hall, but they used to get information, where to get a dog license, what to put in the recycling, go, the other day, about two weeks ago, I'm leaving my house, Mount Prospect Avenue, I'm garbage, I'm recycling day, rather, and so I got, so I had to follow the garbage truck, there was no place to go, right? I can't believe what went in that quote-unquote recycling truck. People don't know, everything, actual garbage in there. You're not supposed to put plastic bags, you're not supposed to put garbage, little garbage in the recycling thing. This recycling calendar, years ago, was created for the purpose of giving people information. And it hangs on their wall in their house. Every month they get a new thing, they can look at different things, phone calls of every department were on there. And you had a problem or anything, you had all this stuff. Now, a campaign literature that we, the taxpayers, are paying for your campaign literature, and like.
Mr. Director, is there recycling information in the, in the calendar? There is. Is there information about the recycling app that's there as well? It's all there. It's all there.
It's the zones. It's the zones.
It's also.
Yeah, I mean, the other one, you use, where to get your pet license, all things about fire safety and all that stuff. I have those old calendars, this is nothing but your campaign pictures. And like I said earlier, this is another thing that, in all due respect, Councilman DePena, people are frustrated, you know, you talk about the depression, these are the things, government creates these depression things, so you're not helping them by doing any of these things. Now, the other thing, Councilwoman Burke and Councilman Rovell, you weren't here the last meeting, but they really got my blood pressure up, I don't know if you're looking or you're aware of it, they had a developer standing right here, who wants to build a hundred and twenty residential units on the wreck house, are you aware of that?
Yes.
Okay. I hope this, because then Mayor Mellon tried to walk back, oh, no, it was only a discussion. How does that discussion even get a developer to come here, to have the audacity to do that? We don't have enough, the wreck house, and he talking about poor conditions. When I was in office, we put a bathroom in the first floor, with town employees, with two stalls. We did a complete renovation, and we had two, which, Councilman Graziano will give you the pictures, two basketball courts, the entire place, that old wall that people were falling off was eliminated. I have all the before and after pictures. It's, the other thing, if you look at the map, it's just about the center of the town, a little off-center, because my house is the exact center of town, if you draw those coordinates. But what are you gonna do to these kids? The wreck house was a good wreck house, we had a lot of, a full gymnasium in there, they destroyed that, and we put up this steel barn that's there now, that the kids can't use.
I don't recall a full gymnasium in the wreck house.
Well, maybe you weren't in town, they had a full gymnasium upstairs.
At the preschool there?
Yeah.
At the wreck house?
Talking about the friendly house.
You keep saying wreck house, though.
Uh, well, the friendly house in Silver Lake, we destroyed that, we had very little stuff.
Mrs. Leish will tell you not to talk about prior administrations, because that happened before me.
Well, I'd be glad to talk about prior administrations, including mine, and I'll show you the hundreds of pictures of the renovations. This building would not be here if it wasn't for my administration. Fifteen years, six architects, got tons of money, designed all different things, nobody got anything done. I get office, in sixteen months, we get the plan for this nice public safety building, which you had to see the way the cops were living in the old basement.
The cops are still pretty hot.
And we saved the town hall, our historic town hall. So this we gotta do, and with the potholes, like my wife, we've had three, possibly four leaks right here in Belleville Avenue, Washington Avenue, over the last two months. And what do they do? They fix them and they dump gravel, nobody stamping that you should be putting dirt, within a matter of days, everything collapsed. Now you fix three or four of them, they turn the valve on to reopen them too fast and break, you have another leak now.
I, I do these right by, Mr. Frantantoni.
Up by Washington Street, the same line is now leaking up further. When are we gonna prepare, repair these things properly?
The only way we're gonna repair it, if you document it, Mr. Frantantoni, if you use GovPilot.
Document, I told, I've been telling you at two meetings, they're not, I've been telling you for years.
I don't do the work, Mr. Frantantoni.
Well, somebody's gotta teach them how to fill a pothole. You fill it with dirt, twelve inches at a time, and let them.
I love you, Mr. Frantantoni.
Well, let them, like I said, let somebody go to public service, watch them, how they fill their holes after the renovation. And yet, the last thing is, the state eventually is gonna pave Washington Avenue. Why aren't we doing what Belleville did? Why aren't we replacing all the water lines on Belleville before that repaving? What Belleville did, I mean, Nutley did it, they replaced all their lines on there, and now the last month or so, they paved it. But all the infrastructure is done, we're sitting around like a bunch of clearheads, and we ain't doing a single thing about our water maintenance.
I got it.
Thirty years, you haven't re-lined one single water main.
I forget to tell you. Thank you. Anybody else?
Avenue three oh seven, Fairway Avenue. Uh, first of all, right here on Washington Avenue, Belleville Avenue, that pipe that keeps breaking year after year after year, the biggest hazard right now, today, because you've got all them lumps and everything, and now they're too stalled down for the ice, it's a, it's an accident waiting to happen, all right? Is that the, the state's gotta do that?
No, we actually, we actually did the repair, there was, there was a part that was out for a while. Scheduled to be repaired tomorrow.
Um, can you give me, shed a little more light on what you said about the gray yard on, along the freeway?
It was an old, we did get a correspondence, you could probably open it if you'd like. It was an old, we did get a correspondence, you could probably open it if you'd like. The clerk has it, it came in through the clerk. It's old, nothing new, but they went back in their files and found some open, I don't want to call them open permits, but open issues where they asked the cemetery to stop and the cemetery didn't stop and they now basically reordered them to stop until they can get onsite team here to look at it. Nothing that's new, though, but just old stuff that they found while they're still doing their investigation, the current stuff.
So you're still working on the investigation?
Yes.
Is there anything that locally the town can do to adjust the valve? I know you can't make them do anything in the boom to park, just cleaning up, all the cement and stuff along the riverbank.
Yep, the manager and I were there.
But not covered over like they did the last time.
I'm going to suspect in the spring, I was in the river with St. Valley. St. Valley's sore, you can come back and do that for us.
It's disgusting.
I've been near your house.
Hey, yes. Hopefully someone will get done with that to treat anything that happens.
We're on it.
And I am stressed out. I'm stressed out to the max, but I'm grateful that it's not advantage to see some of these catastrophes going around the country. It's the only thing that keeps me coming along. Thank you all, happy New Year.
Anybody else?
Good evening, everyone. Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. This is my first meeting since the world was turned upside down. The last time I was in this chamber for a council meeting was in March of 2020, right before COVID began to take its toll. I want to start off by saying that I have used the reported concern system many times. I usually get almost immediate responses and quick resolution to anything that I report through that system for what it's worth. The thing I would like to address tonight, I'm sure as everyone in this council and everyone in the audience is so painfully aware, a little over a year ago on October 21st, 2020, one of our trustees for the Belville Board of Education was arrested for DUI here in Belville under Alman next to Ross Common House. I'm sure you all have seen the video of her arrest. Her conduct during that arrest was absolutely disgraceful and reprehensible. In addition to all the expletives, she said at one point that, to the arresting officers, that you're all beneath me. She just, her conduct was just atrocious. Meanwhile, our Belville Police Department, as expected, conducted themselves with the utmost professionalism and showed her immense courtesy and respect during her arrest. They also warned her multiple times that if she continued to resist, she was going to be criminally charged for resisting arrest. She clearly did so. I mean, anyone watching the video, whether she was first arrested at the Ross Common House or she was brought to the Sally Port here in this building, she continued to resist arrest at every turn. On top of it, she psychotically yelled out during her arrest, call Vinnie, call Vinnie. And when I heard the video for the first time, I thought, well, maybe she's a big fan of our favorite son, Joe Pesci, and she's a big fan, she wanted Vinnie Gambini to come in to represent her. But no, she was, she was trying to, in her delusional mind, solicit help from one of our council members, which would have been a major felony had that occurred. She had her trial in Verona last October, the 27th. It had to be moved to a different venue for obvious reasons. But during her trial, Judge Paparazzo and the Verona prosecutor, Brian Mason, repeatedly said that it was astonishing and dumbfounded them. And actually Judge Paparazzo said at one point that it offended the sensibility of his court that she wasn't charged criminally, not only with resisting arrest, but also with assault. And she went on to testify and said some of the most outrageous things. Firstly, that she wasn't drunk. She claimed that the alcohol the officer smelled was sanitizer that she had been using that evening that got to her face mask. Well, even though isopropyl alcohol, which is in sanitizer, and alpha alcohol, which is in alcoholic beverages, are completely different compounds, which the judge and the officers who testified acknowledged, she wasn't wearing a face mask throughout the entire ordeal. So that was ridiculous. She also, perhaps the most absurd thing ever said in this township, at least in 2020, was that she hypothesized that Mr. Melon and I worked together on a conspiracy with the Belville Police Department and the Carney Police Department and the Carney Observer to set her up, which is, you know, just beyond baffling. When Judge Paparazzo finally pronounced sentence on her, he convicted her of multiple DUI offenses. He said during his closing remarks that she has absolutely zero credibility. And he also said that anyone watching the video would either conclude that she was extremely intoxicated or profoundly mentally ill. I think he, his mistake there was using the conjunction or. I think he should have used and, but that's besides the point. What I'm being up to is.
You're almost out of time, sir.
Yeah, based on all of this, clearly you have seasoned judges, prosecutors saying she should have been criminally charged. Who had the responsibility for not making that charge against her? I've heard competing explanations. First, it was that the Belville police officers involved had that prerogative, they didn't bother to do so. Then I was told that, no, they wanted to charge her, but they were overruled by the police chief. And then I've also been told that the whole entire police department wanted to charge her criminally, but the matter was then taken out of the hands of the Belville Police Department and the Essex County Prosecutor's Office made the decision not to prosecute her. Can someone please tell me who, if this decision was done locally, did someone here make that decision or was it done externally to Belville?
Thank you.
Well, can I, can I get an answer to that before I walk away?
You made your comments. I personally find this personal vendetta that you have against this person who may have emotional or mental or addiction problems, that you standing up here after someone's been charged and convicted and constantly beating a dead horse the way you do, I find that disturbing.
That's not beating a dead horse. In fact, as I've already publicly acknowledged, and I've got a few people helping me, including the Carney Observer, she publicly, she multiply perjured herself during her testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. Your time is up.
And she's going to be held accountable.
Your time is up.
And she's not the only elected official in this township guilty of perjuring. As I'm looking at the other person right now. Thank you.
Speaking from someone who's charged with ethics violations when you were on the Board of Education.
And they were all dismissed. They were all dismissed.
Anybody else?
All dismissed.
I said charged.
All dismissed.
I said charged.
All dismissed, that doesn't make any difference. They were, they were heard and dismissed.
Thank you.
And you tried to set me up as well with one of those ethics. You filed an ethics complaint, which was immediately laughed at by the expedition. You have plenty of time to wrap your adversaries. And I think will be soon, soon the tape will be turned on.
Mr. Sheldon, you're done. Anybody else?
Happy New Year, first of all.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you. Town manager, Mr. Attorney, and clerk. I just want to say that the event we had Friday was really amazing, the Three Kings event. It's great to see when the township and Board of Education comes together and throws such an amazing event for the entire community to enjoy and to really celebrate our diversity. I think it's great and I can't wait till the next one. In terms of comments to the manager specifically, on Franklin Avenue, only intersection with Continental, there is a pole that was there when people would walk through. It was like a cautionary pole where people would walk from Wendy's to the chandelier. I don't know if there was an accident, a car hit. It's been, the pole's been down on, in front of where the old Bank of America little building was. And it's just been there for the last week and I don't know if anybody's noticed it yet, but. Speaking of GovPilot.
Apparently so many people are using it, I don't know why everybody comes to me.
Yeah, now, but yeah, that's, that's one thing.
Jump on in tomorrow, Frank.
I appreciate that. And again, I just want to wish everybody a happy New Year and a great night.
Happy New Year.
Just Frank, not to correct you at all, I don't mean to correct you at all, but we had a great event for holiday tree lighting, Board of Education, Christmas tree lighting Belville. Three Kings was just municipal, only, only because the school district can't get involved in overly religious events. We would love to have you guys and you guys definitely supported us and gave us support for the property, but technically you guys can't be involved in that one, but you guys did participate in the tree lighting.
Individual trust, but either way, everybody did their job.
Absolutely, absolutely. I don't want anybody to take your statement and think that you guys could, because that would be a whole nother problem. As often happens here. Anybody else? Motion to close public comment.
Second.
The motion made in second to close public comment. The clerk called the roll.
Councilmember Cosmally.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Strumalberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes. What do we have? 20, please. Anybody else?
Yeah.
We need to hold two.
No.
No, it's not.
Not currently?
Just gave you.
A motion for consent agenda?
Second.
Just 20, correct?
Just 20. Yep, make a motion. We have a motion made in second to move the consent agenda. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosmally. DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.